Board of Selectmen to order. I would start off by reminding folks that our first two meetings were 29 minutes apiece. So let's see if we can match that. All members of Board of Selectmen are present. I do have two items that I'd like to add to the agenda. They were last minute as, I apologize for that. They're both under unfinished business. As 7D, I'd like to add a discussion of the splash pad. And as 7E, a discussion of police union negotiations. If I could have a motion for that, I appreciate it.
Make a motion that we add 7D splash pad and 7E police union negotiations to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Allen, seconded by Marie. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is amended. Are there any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 2019, special meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Marie, seconded by Sarah to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes are approved. How about for November 25th?
I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes of November 25th, special meeting.
Motion made by Sarah, seconded by Marie. Any discussion or corrections? Are you good?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes are enough. Public participation. Is there anyone who would like to make comments to the board? Chief, pardon.
I just wondered why we didn't put a pledge of allegiance.
No pledge of allegiance, no approval of agenda.
We're going to call that growing pains. We should actually, we should do that. Thank you for the correction. We're going to do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, clear, free, and just as for all.
Thank you, Josh. Are there any other comments from the public? Maybe an address, please.
Thanksgiving Day was a difficult day for some people on Devo Street. I would like to thank our first selectmen for being proactive in keeping people informed and making them as comfortable as they could be.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Other public comment?
Yes.
Just Town, Tallamini, 23 Rice Road. Just a kudos out to the Highway Department. They did a wonderful job the last two days, the two days of the storm.
Any other comments from the public? Thank you, folks. Communications, I do have in the packet a letter from the WPCA commending the cooperation between that agency and the Police Department, particularly in terms of traffic management. So it's a nice accolade from one town agency to another, and thought it was worth including. Boarding Commission's resignations and appointments. We don't have any resignations. Rick Webster has agreed to be reappointed to a term on the Veterans Commission as a regular member for a term expiring December 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we reappoint Rick Webster to the Veterans Commission as a regular member for a term expiring December 1st, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Sarah, seconded by Charlie. Any discussion?
Is he in? No.
He is not in the room.
Okay.
He works hard, he does a good job for the Commission. He plays a pretty key role, I believe, in organizing the road breaks. I think that's his, that's his main function, right?
He's the race director.
He is the race director. All those in favor of reappointment?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Next is a new appointment. There are vacancies for town constables. Gil Hayes has asked to be appointed for a term expiring November 21st, 2023. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Gil Hayes for constable for a term expiring November 23rd, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Marie, seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. So carried. We're going to make that 29-minute mark.
Just jitters.
Well, I also know it's coming, we're not going to make it. So the next item of business is the special board and commission vacancies. In your packet also, you'll find that same chart that has, that we were working on in terms of liaison assignments, and I draw you to the middle two columns. Those indicate which boards and commissions have regular member vacancies and which have alternate member vacancies. It would be column, what would be columns, D and E. So as, as we think about trying to fill out volunteers for boards and commissions, that's a useful tool for getting a sense of where there might be opportunity for people to serve. If there's, if there are people in the audience, we have a pretty good attendance tonight. If there are people in the audience who might be considering getting more involved in something, any of the five of us can share with you what those vacancies may be and see where there's a good spot to fit people in.
There's another list that might be more helpful than that one for those of us that haven't been around for a while. It's on, this one out of Town Clerk's office, it actually gives you minority representation, how many each party you can have on, and it's updated as 11/27.
Okay.
So if anyone wants copies, get them in.
The membership and the appointment information should be the same because that's where this information came from. This does not include the minority representation question. For those who may not be aware, minority representation says that no one political party can hold more than a bare majority on any board or commission. It does not actually guarantee any seats to any minority party. It just caps the number of seats that the majority party can have. So for example, if there is a board with seven members, there could be four Republicans and two unaffiliates and one green candidate and no Democratic candidate. That is permissible under minority representation. All it does is prohibit one board from having more than a bare majority on any given board or commission.
And as of right now, there's two outstanding requests to sit at the Board of the Commission. I verified them, alternate positions, I verified those, and I'll be giving those names to be put on the next agenda. I'm currently working on one other, but I understand you guys are working on the Board of Finance, it has to be a Republican candidate. Understand, there might be two people interested in that, but there is an alternate, so I'm working on that one, so hopefully I'll have that one done also.
So that's, that's an interesting circumstance, and I know as a former chairman you're familiar, but there may be some who don't. Vacancies on the Board of Finance for regular members are filled by the Board of Finance. Vacancies for Board of Finance alternates are filled by the Board of Selectmen. It's a weird dichotomy, but that is the process.
Could I pose a question? Would it be possible to give an updated list to the Chairman of the two political parties?
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
It's typically the two political parties recommending.
Yeah, we can, we can for certain do that.
Jason, you made a couple of appointments to EDC last time. Would you go on?
That's right, that had been sworn in, that's the one that listed up here. So, well, that's how we check.
Yeah.
So the next agenda item is not a new one. I think we're all familiar with the discussion on charter revision. What the general statute say is that every municipality needs to review their town charter, their governing document, at least once every five years. That is not a limitation on how often it can be done, it can be done more than every five years. One of my principal objections to the way the last Board of Selectmen handled that whole process was that the timing of that charter revision review lined up with a municipal election instead of a higher participation election, like presidential or gubernatorial. So I wanted to kind of canvass the board and get a sense of where you four think we ought to be in terms of revisiting that in a more modest fashion for consideration on the presidential ballot in 2020, or giving the community some time to kind of let things settle and revisiting that for potentially a gubernatorial election in 2022. My suggestion would be if we did move forward with a 2020 ballot question, because of the narrow timeframe and because of how expansive the suggestions were in this most recent election, we might want to ask a commission to take a more narrow look at things and perhaps suggest to them that we would only consider forwarding three or four questions, not 10 or 12. I think that might be a more palatable way to go if we decide to go that route. But I'd like to hear from you guys as to whether you think that's something we ought to be doing now or should be waiting until the gubernatorial in 2022. Any thoughts?
I'm all for a revisitation of it. I think it's still fresh in a lot of people's minds as, you know, what is important to the town and what's not important to the town. So I don't see any reason why not to revisit it.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I'd have to agree with Mr. Nordehl. I think it is fresh in everyone's mind right now. It is, 2020 presidential election usually gets a high voter turnout. I think it would be a good opportunity for the public to vote on it, and I think limiting it to three or four is a good idea. So I would be for it as well.
I think we made it, well, not made, I think the committee made that if those triage didn't pass, we would certainly be one of the first things that we would take a look at. And I think the assumption was that by doing that, we were going to form a committee and push that forward. I agree that it's in everybody's mind. I don't think a lot of the things that came forward are necessary, so we could scale it back. Probably about eight questions, because that's just the most clean kind of stuff that somebody wants. But I think there's at least three items that I would like to see go forward for this next election.
I don't really have any different to add. I agree, and I said it during the debate, that I think we should get back at it with a new commission with one to three questions. You know, we definitely keeping it, you know, specifically low. I don't know what the exact number is, but for sure, I think we should, while people are fresh on all the ideas that were out there and are up to speed, I mean, our biggest problem really anytime is getting communication out there. So, I mean, people are listening, people have just got done talking about this, and I heard a lot of great ideas in that last Board of Selectmen meeting, so we should keep it going.
Okay.
With that said, the negative side of that is to make it clear, in my mind, the negative side is we have the extra money budgeted for the secretary to get us through, depending on when we started, till next budget arrived, because that was an issue. And my other concern is that we're going to have volunteers and they're going to be on a tight schedule. And that's a concern, because that might turn away people because they can't attend as many venues in a condensed form. So that's the negative side that I see. But because it was said, I would like for us to keep that in mind.
So what I'll do then for the next meeting, I'll develop a draft of a charge we can vote on to actually impanel a commission. In the meantime, there's nothing stopping us from reaching out and asking folks to submit applications for it. Considerations, I really would like to get a very representative group, people, you know, people Mr. Tallamini's age to people Mr. Loos's age. People from both sides of town, people from both political parties, people who work in town, people who don't work in town, as much of a cross-section of folks as we can get. That was another mistake, I think, that has been made in the past and we can correct. I'd like to get them applying so that we have people to vote on for the December 19th meeting. So I'm going to ask you folks to reach out to people you know who may be interested, and certainly members of the, of the public as well. So, okay, I don't think we need a vote on that at the time because we don't have the actual charge, but I will have that for our meeting on the 19th. That brings us to capital improvement planning. So this is a holdover from the last meeting where we were doing the liaison assignments. Sarah, I did check the ordinance to find out if, if, it turns out the Board of Selectmen does not have a designated seat per set. We have, Amy O'Toole is an advisory member, Lenny Norton, as the Director of BPW, is an advisory member, and I am an advisory member. There are two vacancies that, I believe there are two vacancies that are still to be filled on CIP. That's not to say that we can't have a selectman serve in that seat, but we don't have one that is actually designated that way. So we can either use that as an opportunity to engage somebody else from the public, or we can appoint one of the four of us. But I did do the homework you asked me to do, and that's where we stand at. They're, incidentally, they're not meeting again until I think June 15th, so we have some time on that.
Got it.
Their, their pre-budget work, I believe, is completed, and now they're going to wait until the budget process has come to a conclusion before reconvening.
Okay. Thank you.
Where is Mr. Sauerhofer and Ms. Susan Maltese?
She'll probably get back. Sorry, who's walking now?
Did she just hide in there?
Yeah. No, they're making copies.
Well, while we're waiting for that, I take a motion to move out of order and take up 7E police union negotiations. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of taking that one item out of order?
Aye.
Okay. So we have a number of collective bargaining actions that will need to be undertaken in the not-too-distant future. The most pressing one of those is police union negotiations. The last representatives from this board who were part of that negotiating team are no longer on this board. And so before we can really reconvene and start having meaningful discussions with that bargaining unit, we need a full complement. Allen, in your capacity as a Board of Finance member, you were sitting on that negotiation team. I would be happy if you, as a selectman, would continue in that role because I need the institutional knowledge. I don't know what's been going on there, from that perspective.
I was going to offer, if you needed somebody, that I would be happy to serve.
Okay.
Continue that because, yeah, I was there since the beginning and up until the last meeting.
Yeah, I don't think that it will take that much of a time commitment, but it would be more helpful than coming in full. Does anyone have any objection to Allen sitting on that? Over the course of our term, as these things come up, I'd like to have each of you participate in that process. If for nothing else, it's, it's a pretty educational way of diving deeper into the contract language and what the bargaining unit is doing, what the town's role in administering that is. So this would require a motion, so I'd like to ask that the board appoint Allen as a member of the police negotiations.
Make an appointment to add Allen Baker to the police union negotiation committee, effective immediately.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. So now I'd like to go back into regular order and take agenda item 7D, which is a discussion of the splash pad. That will include Joe Sauerhofer and Melissa Maltese.
Hey.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you guys?
Good. Good.
Thank you for taking us.
Where does that easel been?
Well, we try not to look like Front Street so we don't leave the stuff laying around there stored in the back room.
Good to know. I was watching the consultant and planning and zoning commission the other day, their big whole bundle of stuff standing there for 45 minutes. I was like, wow, that's not very nice.
Yeah, there's two easels and one of them boards. Oh, whiteboard? No. Papers. Oh. So what are you guys here to talk about? Splash pad.
So we are here because we are in need of some additional funding. With the architectural plan in place and completed, it has come to our attention that there's been some hiccups in the location of the splash pad or potential location.
Say nothing of the dated quote. Yes.
On top of the almost four-year-old quote that we've been working off of now. So with that said, we had a well test done at the park to figure out if we would have enough water to supply the pad, and our well did not perform to what it, we had hoped it would. So we are in need of a Plan B for a water source. We're working with an architectural firm to figure out what that would be. The first option was to connect to, connect the water, which would be an astronomical number.
The connection and the water usage.
And the water usage. Our original plan was to do a spray-to-drain operation, which is much cheaper in the initial startup. But now we are going to have to go to a research system, which would need us to require a holding tank.
Holding tank, a filter, pumps, a housing unit to hold, like a small building, small shed.
They also had talked to, talked about diverting water from the reservoir and using that as the water source for the pump, but that was a no-go for both DPH and DEEP. So this is the solution available for the project.
Unfortunately, we had to shift it forward. We couldn't put it where we wanted to. Grades changed, so our site mark price changed. We had to bring in some fill. So everything for our master plan, which we have with the new concession stand and bathrooms and everything to go eventually, we pulled it all closer this way. Originally, it was gonna be farther out because it's a lot flatter, but it just, it drops off too much, so we would have to put retaining walls and everything if we went back, so this was the best place for us. We'll be able to leave our two buildings in place now, so we'll be able to have them until eventually we can come before capital improvement and get a new concession stand and bathrooms. So we're short about $150,000. We're asking for that. It's, cost of everything's gone up in four years on us and it's concrete, it's everything. It's, we're not looking to build a Taj Mahal, we're just looking to get the splash pad in. And that's what we need. We'd like to get it out to bid in January so we can break ground and have it ready for this summer.
How many towns have these?
None in North Central Connecticut.
None, none in North Central Connecticut, so this would be actually an attraction.
Yeah.
Closest one is...
Not really.
Yeah.
Massachusetts.
Yeah, that's that park where Little's Zoo is.
Fourth Park. So, anything else? Questions? Comments?
Remind me again what our original price tag was on this?
$280,000.
What was approved by?
$280,000.
Yep. Do you know what the recoup cycle would be based upon any additional anticipation of usage from the public?
So we didn't set any pricing yet based on, not knowing whether it's going to be going in or yet, but my commission has set on their agenda for the next meeting.
Do you have any feel for exactly, you know, how much more draw, I mean, you'd get, really how much you can handle over there?
I think we can handle it with no problem. As soon as we put the conceptual plan up online, it literally took off and people were asking if we should open when. I think, I think there is a draw. It's a great family attraction. ADA compliance is huge and it allows for people of all abilities to play together with no limitations.
This is really a quality-of-life question, and we have not done a good job as a community in recent years in terms of funding quality-of-life projects. That's why there's not a lot of stuff that's happening here. Melissa is the first one to rightly point out that when she goes through the traditional CIP process, she can't compete with a cruiser or a fire truck or, you know, whatever the project is. I think there's an opportunity to really reinvest in something that we can, that the community can benefit from and enjoy.
Well, I mean, if, the research system is killing us. We were just spraying, it was gonna be basically like a giant spray cloud, but we can't. The water won't, if we suck all the water out, then we're gonna have a problem with the toilets, the pavilion up on top, which gets rented out almost every day.
And that is, that is a moneymaker.
Yep. I mean, and then on top of it, the bathrooms and everything that are down below for the people enjoying the beach and the water itself. So it just really, believe me, it pains me to be here in front of, asking for money. It's gonna be worse when I have to sit in front of Geraldine, because she's probably gonna throw something at me.
She's warming up in the bathroom.
I know. I can feel it. So...
So this park has been substantially similar since my dad cleared it as a 17-year-old in the 70s. We haven't done...
Nothing.
We haven't done anything.
Our buildings are, you know, I mean, they're in, they're in okay shape. They're, you know, they need some updates. They need, we need some bathrooms up there and stuff, but we're getting there, you know? We're not, this is a good start. It'll be a start towards hopefully getting a strategic plan where we can turn the park into, you know, a destination, not, you know...
So you haven't really done any looking into how much you can charge or how much you would charge? And I don't even know, it's just one admission to the park, right? And so that overall admission is gonna go up? It's not like this is gonna be a separate attraction.
No.
With a fence around it or something. So, I mean, you're somewhat limited on how much you could increase.
So currently, we only sell season passes to residents, so we could potentially open that up to non-residents and charge a non-resident to help to recoup some of that money. We also charge, we charge $2 per person per day for a resident to come into the park.
And how many people do you see throughout the summer, generally, average?
So last year, we did about 1,500 people from June to September.
You don't have any, do you have any feel, like, if you did add non-residents, you know, what that might be? Would it be a third more?
Again, if we went with the season pass model, you could potentially charge $100 a family for the season pass to come to the park. It's not out of the ballpark of things that other towns are already doing for their pools.
I was gonna ask, that's competitive?
And then you would attract more people, more daycare centers coming out for their day trips to increase all the revenue there.
So, for example, we go to Veterans Memorial Pool as a summer camp to use their pool facility as a field trip. We could then host other parks and park departments as a field trip location for a splash pad day. You can rent it out for birthday parties. There's, there's special needs groups that could rent it out. There's revenue generators, endless, really, just a matter of creating better fee structure, which is what we're doing.
This, we come out of the undesigned fund balance, which is in excess of the town's stated policy. We have more than 20% reserved.
That was gonna be my next question. I don't remember where we left it because this was not the only thing we had taken out of there, last year or the year before.
I, believe me, the first conversation after they came into my office was with Amy to say, "Do we have the money for this?" And she said, "Yes, we're here to make this."
So this would be set for a town meeting.
So the process from this would be, if the board were to approve it, we would forward the recommendation to the board of finance and then to a town meeting upon their approval. So the timeframe, so, you know, their, their next meeting is December 18th, so we would, we wouldn't be taking any action until after they, they approve it if they do.
So this $150,000 that you're asking for is based on, so we haven't gone out to bid for it. Who gave the estimate? Was it...
The architect engineer gives the, it's a building estimate, yes.
Do you have any documentation that we could look at so I could see that or...
We have a copy, but we would prefer it not be public knowledge because I don't want a contractor to get ahold of the prices and then the bid.
If, if it's introduced here as a public document.
So I don't have anything with me right now.
That's, next time.
I don't have anything, but...
I didn't bring it with me.
It is, it is a number that the architect firm, which that's what they do for a living, gave us. And I can see where it's, their estimate was a half a million dollars and we're looking for about $450,000 because we can do it for that, maybe even less.
When, when you issue, and I'm gonna paraphrase our conversation from yesterday, so correct me when I get this wrong, but if we issue a line item RFP, we actually can, based on what the available funding turns out to be in terms of being able to complete the project, we can scale it back so that we're able to meet what the, the project is in contrast to what we're willing to funding is. But we know for sure that with what we have, we're not gonna be able to do it.
Right. So if it means we don't buy extra, I don't know, fountain head, we put off and, you know, we figure out a way to fund that later. But bottom line is, what we wanna do is make sure we can get the splash pad in and the handicap ramp down in that we land on so the, you know, the ADA people can get down to the bottom and come up and play in water at the same time.
So I would entertain a motion to...
Who'd make it?
To approve, approve, oh yeah, I was planning on it. I would make a motion that we approve to move forward the splash pad additional cost of $350,000 to the board of finance for the implementation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just think it's a great step moving forward to bring revenue into the town and to bring our living market up somewhat because now we'll have something to offer, not just for the three-year-old that wants to run through a splash pad, but for the elderly that really don't have anything. This is perfect for them to entertain an outing and whatever, so I just think it's something that's gonna move us forward because we've been lacking in that area for a long, long time. So I would support it.
I mean, I think it's great for the community. It was approved at town meeting prior to this. We have invested a lot into it. I mean, I think it is a great thing to continue moving forward with. I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not gonna be back next month asking for more, you know, that we're...
They will not be back asking for more for this.
Okay.
This is the first time we've had to do this in all the projects we've had done in six years.
Well, the quote, the quote is four years old.
Yeah, well, somehow we tend to try to make it, but we can't make up the money. We just can't.
It's, I didn't realize the quote was four years old. I thought the quote was what was submitted the night of the meeting before it went in public meeting. So lessons learned in the future, maybe we could update a quote before you come forward.
There was a quick turnaround.
Yeah, I understand that.
I would say, in our defense, we're under the gun a lot. We have a lot going on throughout the course of days, and for us to come up with something instantaneously, it was, it was a best guess on what other cities were doing because these were basically done in the cities and they had public water, they had public sewers and...
And we don't.
Well, there's sewer there, but, you know, I mean, again, all that's added cost that we were trying to just do a simple...
I understand. And I didn't mean to criticize the team out that way, just for clarification for the public that might be thinking that.
Gentlemen?
I think it's, like I said, I think at the board of finance meeting when we originally approved it, it's, you know, taxpayers going directly back to the families in this town that paid them for the most part. And on the other side of that, I also think that we, I think it'd be a great idea to look closely at how we could recoup some of the cost of it, you know, with non-residents potentially or whatever, but I'd like to see a little more detail on that.
Yeah, that might be a budget time discussion.
Yeah, I always liked this idea and thought it was a good one. I hope it goes through, but I do think it's gonna be a big ask with some of the other issues in town when you get to board of finance and you may be a town meeting.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie?
Jason, I just have to review the motion. I got as far as, move forward with the splash pad and I missed the rest of the plans.
So it was, it was an added appropriation for $150,000 to recommend to the board of finance and forward to town meeting. No, we, we think the decision is sent to town.
Oh, okay.
They, they approved the expenditure. That's a major real function of this board. So they, that is...
So they need to have another meeting or you can do that?
We do not need to have another meeting. Once the board of finance...
I don't mean to rush, but...
If the board of finance approves it, we can set a town meeting thereafter. I don't need to come back to this board and have us, have the same discussion again and then leave. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Onto new business. So we need to set a couple of meetings, and I'd rather not bring people out more often than I need to. So what we can, what we can try and do is set them for the same night. And this gets to agenda items A and B. The annual town meeting is a meeting that's required by the charter. At the annual town meeting, the town accepts the annual report. We pass several procedural motions to authorize the first selectman and treasurer to continue operations for the town. Those motions that we talked about at our inaugural meeting. It's the pro forma stuff that just keeps the trains running. We also have to have, or we don't have to have, but we should have a general meeting, which is an opportunity to educate newly-elected officials, town staff in terms of some contemporary issues. Because of the turnover in elected officials in particular, I reached out to the Freedom of Information Commission to ask their availability to come and do a FOIA training for elected and appointed officials as well as town staff. And in order to do those three groups at the same time without impairing overtime costs or comp time costs or, basically without significantly inconveniencing anyone, they have available now, there's a laundry list of towns that are asking for these presentations to happen, so we can either get in a queue and whenever they get it scheduled, you know, we try and do it. But they do have December 19th available, which is our next board of selectmen meeting. What I would suggest is that we schedule the general meeting for a 5:30 start time, which doesn't interfere with town department staff in terms of staying over, and they're, they're gonna be here anyway. We invite elected and appointed officials to that FOIA training, which we can do here in this room. At 7 o'clock, we would convene our regular board of selectmen meeting and then recess that at 7:30, which is when we would have our, the annual town meeting. Annual town meetings by charter, as Charlie pointed out to me earlier, need to happen at 7:30. So what I'd like to do is have a really jammed December 19th and check a lot of boxes. It, it works for FOIA. I wanted to check with you guys to see if that schedule seemed to make sense, and if it does, we'll go ahead and work on sending out notifications and invitations to folks who probably should be there. It's an open meeting to the public, but I wanna make sure that people who have been newly-elected or newly-appointed in particular have access to a FOIA training. FOIA is the Freedom of Information Act. Does that sound like a reasonable plan to everybody?
Yeah.
Reservations? Nope? That works for everybody? So that would be the plan. The only potential hiccup there, which I don't think is going to be a problem, would be that the annual town report may not be ready by then. I've seen a draft of it already, so I think that it is going to be ready by then, but it just, flagging that is something we may need to circle back on at a later date, but not too far after that. I don't think it's going to be a problem, but I want to put that out there at the outset just in case it does come through. Okay. Budget guidelines. We are late, and that has everything to do with a new board coming in and the meeting dates in the calendar. But departments, agencies, and organizations that participate in the budget process need to submit their budget asks to us. And so I took the liberty of drafting a draft of a letter that is going to require some feedback from you guys in terms of what direction and policy we're going to be setting for our budget requests for the next year. So I'm going to need you to take one of those and give one to Peg. I gave my copy away. So there is, actually, can I steal one of those back for the discussion and then I'll give Peg a copy? So there are, this is mostly boilerplate from what's been used in years past. Example of options section is where we would insert something that would outline what our priorities are. And I presented four ideas, but they are not, I'm not married to any of those. I'm really looking for where you guys want to go in terms of setting goals and objectives. The options that I laid out is that we're asking existing appropriated departments to limit their requests for an additional funding to a certain percentage. We are asking for a status quo budget proposal, which would include current personnel and existing services. We are asking departments to each provide an example of an opportunity to save the town expense, or an opportunity to cost share between departments, or a means of generating non-property tax revenue to partially offset department or town expenses, or another option. I'm not saying that any one of those or any combination of those is it, but I wanted to get a conversation started, so folks could think about what our priority is going to be as we move forward with the development of our request.
Well, I would say that we should, at this point, we need to follow a 2% increase in the previous year's budget. So for somebody to come in, unless it's contractual, and we have nothing pulled over it, to come in with something that's going to increase their budget over 2%, then I would recommend they not do it, unless it's contractual. And that could be contractual for a copying machine, contractual for an employee contract, or whatever the case may be, or keep all of other stuff at that 2% until we can do something to fix that. Because if not, we're just going to keep going referendum, 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 until it fails. Or at least we'll have a better starting point, I think, than previously. That's my opinion on there. And I have no problem with two and three. I'm still thinking about four, it's another option, but I think we covered everything that I would have covered and everything that I put out there in my campaign process that I'd be looking at, new services, I'm looking at consolidation, and looking for new revenue in town. So I think that covers why we're looking for a movie for. But in keeping that in mind, we also, which is on the, I'm not exactly sure what we're going to cover, but we know this is an ongoing project where the two fire departments merge. I don't know what legal costs you're going to do to that. I don't know if there's any other outstanding legal costs that are pending for anything major. So I'd like to at least have a fighting chance before we even get started.
I would guess I would add to that. If we, you know, it's a little short time to actually come up with like meaningful cost shares or, you know, that kind of stuff, consolidations, you know, between now and the 20th, but yeah, with, you know, some kind of language, you know, if somebody's got an idea, a good idea, they'll have to hear it as far as that is concerned.
So you want to, you want to see an emphasis on caution?
I think it's a little short to come up with anything big at this point, but, you know, start now and maybe next year, too.
Well, I think for the departments, this is what this is for, and then we can certainly add to their narrative to us, or go to their budget workshops and present anything that we may be thinking of to see if it is doable for them.
Great.
Yeah, I agree. I don't have anything to add.
Sure. I agree with what's been said, but I do agree with Marie. I really don't think... Number four should be there. I think that can be...
So, so just for, just for application, this, the example of options, is that something I would include in the letter? I was throwing that out there as conversation pieces for us to say, okay, we're going to go in this direction, or we're going to go in that. It's not a menu.
Got it.
And I, actually, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I don't want people to get the impression that it's a menu, because it isn't. You know, I really think it's important that we set an expectation of what those proposals would be. And what that does is it makes the budget proposals more moderate. It makes them more, I think if people know what our expectations are at the outset, it makes it easier for them to meet with those expectations. I think if we don't do this, then it becomes kind of a bowl of spaghetti of sorts, and you don't really get to a clear, if we don't set clear expectations, then the people who are submitting these budgets won't know what to do. And I think that just makes the process harder at the outset, and I think if we establish these, it gives the community a sense of what our expectations are. So don't get, don't get waylaid by the one through four, because that's not...
Okay.
What I'll do is, if you guys like one of those options or have another idea, I'll build out a filler paragraph there to support whatever that policy decision of this board is.
One, two, and three?
You want me to build that all? I can do that.
Not wish.
Well, what's the, what's the percentage? You're aiming at the 2% rule, right?
Yeah.
Because that's what the charter says. No, it doesn't mean I agree with the charter or disagree with it, but that's what it's not.
But that's where you're, okay. Is that clear? Do you guys understand kind of what I'm trying to do?
Yes.
Any thoughts here?
None besides what I have already said.
Okay. So I'll do another draft of this and cover what our budget targets are, what we expect those budget targets to include in terms of existing or new proposals, and then, and ask for ideas for cost sharing or cost reduction options. Does that seem like a reasonable...
Yep.
Okay. Chief Barton, if you'd like to participate, please feel free, but this is a brand-new Board of Selectment. There is an ongoing issue with the fire district and a tax disparity issue. There are solutions that are available, and it's a problem that we need to tackle. So I thought it'd be a good idea to have this board start having a conversation, maybe with some feedback from the chief, about where we're going to go next. You know, so available options, and this is not at all inclusive, so if people have others that I'm forgetting, please chime in. The fire district comes back into the town budget, and everything is unified that way. The circumstance remains status quo is an option. The district is expanded to include the corporate limits of the town, or a special services district is overlaid over the non-district portion of the community, and fire service is covered through that mechanism. Those are the four that I readily think of. If anybody, did I miss one? Okay.
I don't think status quo was one, though.
It's an option. I'm not saying it's a solution, but it's an option. It's not the one that anybody wants.
There is another one. There is another one, contract for fire services.
Contract.
I haven't heard much about that one. Can you, can you explain that as a concept?
Well, we could enter into a contract, just like you enter into a contract with a garbage collection or something of that nature.
So you would negotiate a contract for the budget for, what, a yearly basis, or...
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be, it would have to be the exact amount as of the broad fire services each year. Close to it.
Well, I guess for me, and I don't want to relive what we already paid for through the attorney fees that we paid to bring us, come on board. Right. And for me, if they have an agreement that they came together to agree upon, I don't want to go back and rehash that all out, not unless something just flashes, and I have a thought, and I'd like to talk that out, you know, but I don't want to go back and have them rehash everything where they've been. I don't think that's cost effective, and I don't think that's fair for volunteers to have to rehash everything. But I want to make sure moving forward that I understand where they've been and where we should check off.
Yeah, I guess as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to find out, like, I know there's been a lot of work done over the last year, so I'd like to find out, like, what is it that the fire department wants to do, right? Because that's going to be part of it. Personally, I, you know, I have what I think we should do, but, you know, whether that could happen or not is, obviously, we're a long way from it. So I guess I would want to start with, what have we figured out so far? What does the fire department want to do and kind of move from there?
Well, there are a couple of things that, one in particular, the bifurcated mill rate has proven to be not a possibility. So that's an option that was on the table and is crossed off. The conversations with the two fire departments jointly seem to be at an impasse at the moment. I think that's a fair description of that. But there, you know, you never know. That may turn around, too, and there may be a resolution on that front. The reason, the reason to raise this issue now is because a couple of the available options are budgetary in nature. If we wait too long to really start diving into this, we're going to miss the window. And then that, you know, is a problem that has just prolonged another year, which would make it five in a row. So, you know, I thought it was important to raise it now. Sarah had actually sent an email asking for it to be raised now, and I, the timing is appropriate to start thinking about it, but...
Well, I think that's where we got into trouble last time, is it kind of popped up right at budget time, and it just makes everything a lot harder to just have a conversation about. So I think, yeah, now is the time to talk about it, if it's going to be a change that we're going to make for the budget. And then, you know, those are the kind of questions I had. I know there was some talk about the, between the two fire departments, I don't know where that went, you know, is that longer an option? Is it an option? I mean, all that kind of stuff is important for trying to figure out how, you know, what we think we can actually do to fix this. It may not be everybody's perfect idea, but, you know, what is possible is kind of what I'm going to...
So Chief, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if I were to invite you and Chief Arkery to the next meeting, could we, could we get into some of the, well, could we discuss the charter development process? That you guys went through, and then maybe we could examine what the district's position is on the options that we've outlined to start...
Yeah, I don't think that would be a problem.
What I don't want to do, I don't want to create another commission that's going to do a study that's going to spend, you know, eight months covering two... conclusions that aren't going to be...
Did that twice, sir.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
And most of us weren't on the board when that happened, but we've all been paying attention for a while. So if we can cut to the quick and see if there is a consensus pathway, that would be ideal. So if that, if that's all right, I'll ask both of you guys to the December 19th meeting, which is now going to be a lot longer than 29 minutes. Yeah, Mr. Barton?
Jim Barton, I'm the treasurer of the fire district, so I just would like you to keep in mind that this is not necessarily a fire department problem, but the problem that requires a solution is the double taxation of the fire district residents. And one of the options that you... spoke about, in terms of trying to, trying to equalize that or solve that, getting into budget, that's not necessarily the best option, but the fire district residents should be somehow credited, reimbursed, whatever term you want to make, for all of the dollars that it costs to operate the Broadwood Fire Department. And that's not just the money that's on that line. There are other dollars in other parts of the town budget that are required to operate the Broadwood Fire Department. And the Warehouse Point District taxpayers, as part of their town taxes, are funding that, as well as 100% of their own fire protection. So that's the problem that requires a solution. The best one is probably identify all those dollars, separate them all out, and create the special services district. But I just, it's just, it's not a fire department thing. Operationally, a fire department's a part. It's a, it's a taxation issue.
I think we understand. So unless anybody else has anything more on that...
Well, I just think it's been rehashed and rehashed, and nothing has been accomplished, and I think it's up to this board to make it a big priority that we take a stance and we come to a solution for those taxpayers. I'm glad that it's on the agenda, and I hope we can move forward and come up with some sort of resolution.
We'll get there. Okay. The next thing in the packet then is a request from the Warehouse Point Library for technology purposes.
Hi, how are you? I'm Lois Silver. I'm the director of the Warehouse Point Library. Thank you all for coming to see me. Romali Silver, I'm the president of the Warehouse Point Library.
It's the fire department, too, huh?
Okay, the computers and so on and technology at the library are kind of way old and behind and very frustrating. And I came out one short anyway.
Sorry, can you have a dinner package?
Okay. So we need new computers for patrons coming into the library. We need some new computers for staff is the first thing that's up there. So what we're looking for there is three staff computers. Some of the staff computers have been replaced and are okay. We need four adult patron computers and two children's computers. So these are computers which funds computers and hardware for nonprofits. And through TechSoup, I got an HP coupon which gets you into a special catalog and you get deals. So where I say HP discount there, that means something that I can buy for that price for TechSoup. So I got some really good bargains there. And some of these I didn't have when I came to you before. So this price is less than it was. So we've got it down there for the nine computers to less than $8,000, less than $7,000 is good. The other thing we did is we sold two of our old wooden card catalogs that we're not using anymore. And with that, we were able to buy the Wi-Fi and that's been installed. So we have better Wi-Fi at the library now than we had before with three access points so that it covers the whole section there. We need a new projector. When people come to give a presentation, they need to connect their laptop for pictures and videos and slides. And our current projector doesn't connect with a USB port. You know, it's built into the wall, but it has only the very older connection. And it doesn't project very well. So that also is old and needs to be replaced. And I got a better price on this too through McCoy Technologies, which has been helping us. For the kids, besides the two computers, we want to get them learning stations, which a lot of other libraries have now. These are pretty expensive, but they're loaded with learning programs specially adapted to kids' development and learning, for literacy, to learn to read, and for computer literacy also. So that it's a help to kids getting ready for school and in their first years of school. Those cost more than $5,000. Then the last thing is we have a copier for people, but it only does lack and one. And it doesn't scan or fax or anything like that. So we'd like to have scanning and faxing and so that Wi-Fi on there so people could print from their phones if they got plane tickets and stuff printing out. So the total of this, we've got this down from last time we were here. So it's under $14,000 that we're asking for, for the technology. Now, the other thing that happened is the building. Oh, question.
Okay, so what's $450 for the additional color copy machine, stuff like that? It's just $450. And the total of the entire list is $13,794.
That's not $450 a month?
No. No. Because the business copiers, like, we need that because we don't have that much use of it. We just want it to be able to do all the things. So this would be something that you would get, like, for a small business or even at home. But McCoy Technology gave us that and it says that we would be...
It's a one-time fee. And there's no service charge, no monthly fee.
Well, you have to pay for the toll. There's cost for the toll.
Which you can absorb in your regular...
Just recharge, you know.
I just want to make sure you don't come back with an added appropriation because you've got to do something.
Thank you.
Why are you using McCoy Technology?
Well, our former director contracted them.
Oh, so you have to use McCoy?
Well, we have a service contract with them for a number of years.
So we have some hours that they're giving us that we've already paid for in the contract, a certain number of hours each year.
Okay, so that's why the price is driven down, that it's driven down because you don't have the additional expense because they have to copy that.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you came before the Board of Selectmen September 19th? These are the same items that you were discussing at that meeting?
Um, yes.
Except, but we've already purchased the Wi-Fi.
Okay. And I know there was discussion of possibly looking into a state bid contract. Did we explore that?
I think that's a better choice for us at nonprofits.
So here's the good news on the computer front is the town, rather than paying the $7,000 ask, we have computers that are, we could surplus to you.
Oh.
And that's free to you and they're currently not being used. They're not brand new. Most of them are not brand new, but they're not 10 years old either. They're three and four years old that have been cycled through and can be donated to the library.
I don't mean to sound ungrateful, but that's been happening all the time. We're always constantly getting old equipment, things that people have had in the past, and that old equipment breaks down eventually. We're never starting fresh from the library. We've always, you know, we're taking things that have been used other places and then they're given to us.
Well, you're not going to like my next comment because...
Okay.
Number four, for the, those younger kids' computers, I was going to suggest that we look into the school.
Right. Now, a laptop versus a learning station computer. But I understand what you're saying.
It is a different thing. The learning station is very different from the laptop.
I understand there's probably some differences, but there is...
Just the software though, right? I mean, I'm not a techie. Is a computer not a computer? I mean, it's the software, it's the software that you run on the hardware. If the hardware is there...
Wow. You minute that openly.
I can't change my Facebook picture. I can't. So is that, is that not...
Okay, these learning stations are, have been programmed specially by people specializing in the development of literacy skills and reading readiness skills. So they have special programs and games on them that are attractive to the kids and specially fulfill their developmental needs rather than programs...
Get that, yeah. That's a software package.
I'm thinking, I'm wondering...
In part it is, yes. It's software in part.
There's got to be something similar. I mean, I'm sure they're not giving my granddaughter the laptop and saying, "Go hit the Googles." You know, I'm sure they put some stuff on there for them. There's a purpose behind them being on those laptops. And I think that purpose is probably similar to your purpose, which is enrichment, re-enrichment, learning, that kind of stuff. So I guess my suggestion or my ask was that have we looked into that possibility? If there's something we leverage there, we already paid for that, right? The town already paid for that stuff. You know, can we save a little money with that?
And there are leftover computers, is what you're saying? There are laptops that are not being currently used by the school system?
Well, they don't know what surplus there would be at this point in time. I'm just saying, before we go buy brand new stuff, we should probably look into that because they might serve a purpose.
Well, I'd like to look into it.
Most of the libraries have chosen to get the learning stations and that's what surrounding libraries recommend.
Property maintenance issues for buildings we don't own?
Well, that precedent has been set with the fire department in Warehouse Point.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they needed a driveway. They needed to expand because they had a vehicle that wouldn't fit in the garage and this would cause a problem for the fire department to go on their own because we wouldn't, and we couldn't afford to fund it. So that precedent has been set in my opinion. Whether I agree with the president or disagree with it, it's been set. So I'm just trying to look to see if there's any other avenues before we do whatever is going to happen here. So that's why I asked the most questions because if there's other income available, you know, I'm sure there's going to be other things that's going to come over, come up over the next lifetime of the library.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to be planning, we have to do our driveway soon. So we do have some major expenses ahead of us.
Charlie, you have a question?
It's, to me, it's a town service. It should be funded by the town. A lot of these things, like Marie said, Warehouse Point Fire, the library, it's a town service. We should be funding it. To me, it's, I find it silly that because they're a separate entity, we don't, we own the building. We shouldn't fund it. I don't agree with you. We should be all funded as a town service. They're a town service, provide to the taxpayers of the town.
Look, I have one more question. Since the foundation was damaged and moisture got in there, would that cause the problem having with the furnace and all of that stuff? I just thought I'd ask about that. But if I did, I would suggest go back to the insurance company.
That would have been nice. Boy, that would have been silly to say.
Yeah, the insurance company kind of said, "That foundation is 120 years old. What do you expect?" You know? And they said, "More maintenance should have been done over time," is what the insurance company said.
I probably would agree with that if we didn't know you had a crack. But that's what I heard, if you didn't know it was there.
So isn't there inspection my...
We do. But you don't see everything. And all of a sudden it showed up as a big sinkhole and that's what we saw.
So 120 years old, it's not a Ford Foundation, right? It's a stone foundation.
It's a stacked stone.
Right. And what was happening was the water was hitting off at an angle and it had caused a decline on the steps. And so now, as things sort of deteriorated, they started hitting in the wrong direction. So the water started taking a path into the foundation, which it hadn't done previously.
Personally, I've always found it difficult that we do, we never seem to have enough money for the library. To me, they, both libraries, they're kind of in the same boat as Scott Hall. They provide a good service and the people use it as a town. The population in Warehouse Point that depends on it. Last year, we helped Scott Hall out with the boiler. And I don't remember if we owned that or who owns that or...
We do own it. But... Big ways that we own it.
But it was an added appropriation and one that we felt, I think, was, you know, something worth spending money on because they provide a good service for the community. So to me, I see the libraries kind of in that same boat. You know, we can't afford to have everything that we want. There are some things that, you know, we shouldn't be penny wise and pound foolish. It should be, "Do we want a library?" It comes down to that eventually. You know, are you going to put a little bit of money into it here and there and do what it takes to at least help out a little? We're not going to solve all the problems, but, or not, right? And to me, of course, it's something a lot. So, I mean, as far as the foundation or the, I mean, the heater repair, I'm inclined to help with that. When it comes to these computer stuff, I'd like to see more feasible alternatives before, you know, I'd be, you know, spending money on that side. Because I think we can maybe save some money there and at least with the computers. Now, the printer, you've got, you have, it's not a lot of money you need to print out, you know? But with these other computers and these kids' computers, I'd like to look into that a little bit more and see if there's something we can't leverage from the schools that we already paid for, you know?
So they're kind of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have another question. Was the quote for the firmies sent out the bid? Or did you just choose the one company because you already have a contract with them?
Correct.
So it's just the one company, but you didn't send it out to them?
No, we have a contract with them.
Yeah, they come every year and clean it and, you know, get it.
How did you come to use them? Did you use a bid process or they've just been there for...
It's been so long, I don't even know how that came about. You know, whoever was our executive directors in the past, you know, made those decisions and this is where we are.
Is that company working out of a home or is that a company, company? I'm not familiar with them. I just got to know just a few of them.
I've never been there. They always come to us, so...
They're on the corner of 140 and...
Oh, that's the building? Nobody knows what it is?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I see it there, but I had no clue what it was. That's the building. Okay. Geez, I learned something today. Okay. I thought that was the North Road building and I could never find what it was. I agree with Jason and I think it was Alan that made the recommendation from the school and him from the used town stuff. I think that's an avenue that I feel we should pursue since I just asked you to put it in the budget if there's anything we can do. So we can just expend the surgeon to merge things together. I think that's a good start for libraries. As far as the boiler, that's something that has to be done. I think we still have a little bit extra to do that out of the non-recurring...
Good, close.
I know, but we could squeeze it and wouldn't cost the taxpayers any additional, any additional money. But that's, that's just me.
I feel we're kind of picking and choosing. I think we need to stick with one thing. I agree with Marie said earlier about setting a president. We didn't, presidents, rather, we didn't fund the fire district as far as when they were taken out of the budget, they were looking for things that, they provide public safety and they provide a needed service to this town. And, I mean, as much as I appreciate the library and what they give to the taxpayers, this isn't a town-owned building. And I don't agree with funding and funding the repair based on the way things are at this point. I think the board needs to look at, you know, our policies and procedures and how we treat town services versus town-owned buildings and things of that nature. But I think we need to, I don't think we can pick and choose and I just, it's not a town-owned building and I don't think we should be funding the...
So they have two different asks. One is the technology ask, one is the infrastructure ask. I think everybody has kind of weighed in. Do we want to take an action on either of the two questions? The, one of the, so we, one of the things we can do is surplus unused computers to them, and that's the $7,000 they was to them, and at no cost to us. I think that's an easy thing to do because they're surplus. So, I mean, it's something that would benefit them. We don't need them. If you guys are on board with that, I'd like a motion to surplus the nine computers and monitors to the library association. So move.
Second?
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
I don't.
Opposed? Okay, all in favor. Where did we land on the, on number four?
We certainly don't have any control over what the Florida does, but I don't think it would do anybody any harm to reach out to them.
You can always revisit that. My opinion is let's research that, find out if there's anything that we can leverage from the school and revisit it. Maybe we can, maybe we can't, but it's not like we can't, you know, make a decision on that next week, the next meeting or the meeting after, right? Yeah, I agree with it too. And if you have it, I'd like to see more input on these learning stations as to what they do that's different from laptop work. Just so we have a better idea. Because I don't think there's a clear idea as to what, what they are.
I think you're right.
It says they're 4,000, they have 4,000 localized learning activities. You're not going to get that on a laptop. That's a lot of apps to download. So they're probably utilizing some of the web services. Probably. I suspect they're different than what we have pictured in our...
Right, we'll provide that information. Thank you for asking.
Put it out there.
But in all fairness, as you said, a group of people that organized a group to say JV sports in our school system, which to me, I'm always thinking for myself, pushing for... for shame, but that had to happen. And I'm speaking for myself.
It gives me pride.
Because that includes grant money down the road to get into colleges and whatnot. So I have, you know, some issues. We have another group right now that's looking to form. That I just heard of today about expanding the place for the holding barrier. Because they can't... So, you know, everybody's cutting where they can, and private people are stepping forward. But people still have to...
So the second question still pending is, what do we do about the infrastructure ask? Is there a motion either way there?
Yeah, I would make the motion that we approve the $13,250 to go to the Board of Finance for the furnace.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it for discussion.
Moved by Alan, seconded by Marie. Discussion.
My only comment is, I really would love to see this go to bid rather than just one company. That's my only comment.
Other discussion?
Are you able to put it out to bid? Or is there anything in your current contract that includes what I'm doing? Because I don't know the contract.
I think that we are committed... we're committed to this already. We committed to the company that they would do it for us, and, you know, we're going ahead with that.
So that implies that there's a commitment that this would be done, then?
Yes.
Which is a problem that I have, that you pre-approve something before a motion has been made to accept it.
They have... that says to me that they have... they're going to do it. So they have a means.
We actually put this out, you know, when we originally thought we were meeting on the...
I'm sorry, say that again.
We actually... we sent the proposal in when we thought we were meeting last month. It was like, not that, you know, we were getting our bids then in November. And then our meeting was postponed with the Board of Select until now. It's winter, so there has to be some form of heating. So it has to be convinced somewhere. It's cold out. I mean, you can't...
All right, I vote no.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
We'll circle back with you about getting the computers as soon as we...
Yes.
Approval of tax refund.
I'll move we approve the tax refunds, total of $3,100.
Nearly completed, holding one-on-one meetings with each department head, as well as Chief Barton and Linda Collins, who's the Housing Authority Director. On September 30th, the East Windsor Police Union held a toy drive at Walmart. Police Union is sponsoring 19 families through the Community Services Department. December 1st saw our first snowfall of the season. I took advantage of the opportunity to see what that was like from the perspective of our road crews by doing a ride-along with them as they treated the roads at the outset of the storm. I want to thank Lenny Norden for allowing me to do that, and Dennis Fetco for providing the tour. Our crew worked from about 3:00 PM on Sunday until mid-morning on Tuesday, making sure that our roads were safe and passable. And I think they do a very good job. On September 3rd. On December 3rd, I attended the CCM Annual Conference and participated in workshops dealing with employee management, sustainability projects, and contract negotiations, all of which I hope will provide a benefit to the town. Of particular interest from that presentation... from that conference was a presentation from a group called Sustainable CT. And I brought you guys handouts from that, and I'm going to share this with other groups as well. This is a really cool private equity matching program. So the way this works is it's funded through the Tremaine Foundation and others. And if you are a qualifying project, and a qualifying project could be a sustainability project, could be an energy efficiency project, could be a community garden, could be a beautification project, could be a historic preservation project. And you are an approved project that is crowdsourced, that... I'm sorry, if you're an approved project that is approved by them, for every dollar that you raise, they will match dollar-for-dollar instantaneously up to $25,000. So this is an opportunity to take a $25,000 project and turn it into a $50,000 project. They've done projects in, I think, 90 communities in Connecticut and in 12 other states. And I'm sure that there are groups in town that would benefit from it. The only caveat is that no one entity can have more than one active project at a time. So the town of East Windsor could have an active project, and the Historical Society could have an active project. And Alan Baker, the private citizen, could have an approved project. And all of those things can be happening at the same time. What can't happen is the town of East Windsor cannot have two active projects at the same time. So there's opportunity here. This is a great way of leveraging private funding. I'm thinking about the restoration of the historic green on the Scantic Green... I'm sorry, the historic sign on the Scantic Green. Cost them $2,500 bucks. This is a way they have gotten that done in 12. That's a pretty remarkable thing. And they're looking for municipal partners. So anybody who's interested can go to, I think, sustainablect.org. I believe that, absolutely. Sustainable DT.org or dot com. Check it out, see if there's an opportunity. If the town needs somebody to partner with that, I think it's a great thing to do. While at CCM, I also took time to tour through the vendor hall and network with folks who were displaying there. The... one of the people I talked with was the principal from the Connecticut Economic Resource Center about ways to expand economic development in East Windsor. And they have already reached out in terms of setting up a further conversation with our economic development team. And I'm very interested in bringing them in and having a conversation about what we can be doing to attract and retain good businesses in town. Yesterday, I participated in the Hunger Action Team meeting, which is the first time I've been in something like that. And I was excited to kind of learn about what it is they're working on. I've also reached out to the Department of Agriculture to start a conversation about hosting an ag resources forum in town sometime in the winter. And I should have more information on that soon. I'm looking... I'm hoping to do that sometime in January. But I got a... it's a scheduling thing with a lot of different agencies, so we'll see how that plays out. Coming up, on December 14th, the annual Reach Across America Memorial Ceremony will be held at the Veteran Cemetery in Windsorville. That'll be at 12:00. On December 21st, the Police Department is hosting a Coffee with a Cop event at Baker &amp; the Brew from 9:00 to 12:00. And the Broadbrook Fire Department and East Windsor Park and Rec will be hosting the annual torchlight parade from the middle school to the Broadbrook Fire Department that same day. Parade kicks off at 5:30, ends at the firehouse. And there will be rides, tattoos, arts and crafts, and refreshments, as well as a carol sing with Santa Claus. There's a lot happening in East Windsor right now, and it's a really great time for new people to get involved with the community and be a part of moving East Windsor towards a better future. So that's my first report as first lady.
Could I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Are this document here, which throws you through a weak walkwork in the country, pretended in due part documentation that? Is this something the library could do, renewable and efficient?
I thought about that. And there are nine different criteria areas that are on the website that can be qualifying projects. I'm not sure that they fit those, but it's something that they... if they haven't left, they've left. It would be something they should look at, but I don't think it fits them. There are a lot of activities and groups in town that certainly could qualify. I think it's probably a stretch for them, but I wouldn't not look at it either.
Did you send out an email, please?
Yeah.
I'd rather have them work some days.
Marie?
So Jason is absolutely right. Mark Hill did receive the $650,000. We can't use all of that money because they denied two out of our three projects. They won't allow us to spend the money on the whole project that we wanted to have done there. And they won't allow us to do the access road for emergency vehicles around the perimeter, the backside going towards the fire department. So those have been denied. So we have gone back to them to see if... They would consider letting us use that money for other things up there. So we're just waiting on that. But we did, because I believe it's always a key win streak when it comes to budgeting, to pick up the cost to do that grant. The small city grants this year. And had our own Housing Authority people out of Hartford accept that charge from us to get it done. And we got that grant, so that's a good thing. Trying to get it acclimated to my schedules. And last month saying, okay, oh, that matches mine, you know. I had that committee. I found that I may or may not have a problem. I'm going to try to work them out. But on the 20th of the month, there was a canceled mill site meeting. So I have nothing to report on that. The Building Committee on the 25th was also canceled, so I have no report on that. The Housing Authority, I spoke on. All except for in all my years that I've been involved with the Housing Authority, we never had anyone actually drive through an apartment. We were blessed because the apartment was due to be occupied the following day. That person was notified, and insurance people were up there on Monday. We'll get that fixed, and he's gracious enough to wait another month to get moved in there. So hopefully that never happened again, but nobody got hurt, so that's a good thing. But just to let you know, the Police Department in Ranchem did a phenomenal job of being up there, I want to say, in under 20 minutes. So kudos to them. It may be a lot less than that, but to be safe, I'll say that. On Monday, I didn't realize that the Zoning Board of Appeals was my board until I was filling out the schedule for the year. I don't know if that's mine. That should be somebody else's, like Alan's.
Hey, hey, hey.
About that? So, just to keep them together. So would you mind taking that one over?
Yeah, sure. And only because they don't always meet.
Right. So your first meeting on that was...
Well...
They have a special meeting on December...
Okay, when that is, actually.
Well, they have a meeting on December 10th at 6:30.
First Monday?
Yeah.
First Monday.
First Monday.
Next Monday.
Yeah. At 6:30, you know. And it's at Park Valley.
Oh, it's canceled.
But there's a special meeting, apparently.
December 10th at 6:30. It's been posted in the paper, and it's at Park Valley. Housing Authority, I attended that on the... on the 16th. We'd beat that one to death. Nope. So what else have I got here in November? That's it for me.
So I'll put it north of.
Okay. So my selectman's reports, I'll be focusing more on events, fundraisers, happening town between meetings. So if anybody wants to reach out to me, email me with whatever's coming up within your organization, board, nonprofit, and I will be more than happy to announce it here. So with that, this Saturday, December 7th, starting at 9:00 AM, the East Windsor High Class of 2020 will be hosting a Safe Grade fundraiser with a Craft and Vendor Fair at Scott Hall. Sunday, December 8th, the Connecticut Trail Museum, in conjunction with East Windsor PD and East Windsor Social Service, will be having a Stuffer Cruiser event at the Trail Museum. Every toy donated will honor a half-price admission to Winterfest and the Tunnel Lights. That's five to nine. I will be there. I think some of the other selectmen are planning on attending that as well, just like we did for the Walmart event, which was very successful, I thought. Have a good day. It's good to see everybody there. Thursday, December 12th, Broadbrook Elementary School will be hosting a PJ dig for the kids in conjunction with a fundraiser to benefit Connecticut Children's Medical Center. All students and staff are invited to wear appropriate... weather-appropriate PJs to school, and they ask no slippers. Optional donations of a dollar or more can be sent in with students for CCM save. Saturday, December 14th, the Connecticut Trail Museum will be hosting Storytime with Santa, starting at 9:00 AM. That's a Saturday. So like I said last week, I attended the toy drive with a few of the other selectmen that was held in Walmart with East Windsor PD and Social Services. I think it was a really good success. Special thanks to everybody that came out and volunteered for that, and everybody that donated. I also attended the Board of Ed meeting last Wednesday, in which I did publicly speak to the Board of Ed in recognizing the current board, the current new board, and the old board for all their hard work and service to the town. It's a rough job. I don't envy having their position on top of them meeting twice a month. They also have all kinds of special boards and commissions that do special things within the Board of Ed. They all volunteer for that. And spend a lot of time. And also, speaking with them, I shared with the Board of Ed concerns I heard from taxpayers while campaigning and gave them suggestions as to topics they might investigate. I also recommended they broadcast their meetings and publish more reports on the financial burdens and regulations they face in order to better help taxpayers understand financially where the Board of Ed stands. I'd like to give a special thanks to Mike Moriarty for spearheading the project, which got our historical marker on the town green restored. Him and Historical Society did a great job on that project. I believe they're still taking donations for that. You can visit their website for that. You can visit their website for that. As far as liaison reports go, Warehouse Point Fire did not meet on Monday because of the snow, so we're meeting on, this is coming Monday. And other than attending Board of Ed, I don't have any other liaison reports. So that's it. Thank you.
Selectman Musker.
On Wednesday, November 20th, the Board of Finance had their first meeting as a new board. Amy O'Toole, our treasurer, indicated that we have received 18 million of the 32 million of budgeted tax revenue, and we are where we expect to be at this time. Dr. DeBarge also gave a Board of Education update indicating that there are about 210,000 in unallocated funds to date. She also gave a cafeteria fund update and expressed to the board that there is a plan being executed to improve efficiency and reduce debt in the cafeteria. She also did visit with the Groton Food Service Director to obtain comparisons and discovered implementations that have worked for them. There was discussion of filling a Republican vacancy and an alternate position on the board. Since then, the RTC has met and has endorsed a candidate, whoops, sorry, has met and has endorsed a candidate to fill the full member seat. I hope the Board of Finance will take into consideration the committee's recommendation. On Tuesday, November 26th, I attended the Board of Education meeting. Election of officers for the new board took place, as well as discussion of filling subcommittee assignments. There was discussion of being short-staffed and unsuccessful in finding a substitute nurse to cover sick and vacation time. So a vote was taken to authorize starting the process and searching for a part-time district nurse. This person would work approximately 16 hours a week or more if needed, and their home base would be the middle school, and they would float as needed. It is important to note just how vital our nurses are to the well-being of our student population, and these numbers may astound you. As of the November 26th meeting in this school year, there have been 1,400 student visits to the Broadbrook School nurse, 1,409 visits in the middle school, and 1,428 visits in the high school. On Thanksgiving Day, I volunteered to serve the meal at Pauline's Stockpot, which is East Windsor's only soup kitchen. A delicious turkey dinner was enjoyed by all those who attended. Pauline's does serve a free meal. No questions asked to those in need or anyone just looking for company. Every Friday night at 5:00 p.m. at the Wesley Methodist Church. On Saturday, November 30th, I proudly attended the Stuffer Cruiser toy drive at Walmart to assist in collecting toys to benefit families in need right here in East Windsor. And it was great to stand with Selectman Nordell and Mr. Sousa was there, and I know you were there earlier that day. I'd like to commend our social services department, our police department, and police union who work together to collaborate this event yearly. I was proud to stand with our men and women in blue for such a great cause. Due to the inclement weather on Monday evening, the Warehouse Point Fire District meeting has been rescheduled to this coming Monday, November 9th at 7:00 p.m. And I also will be taking part in the toy drive this Sunday, December 8th, from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Trolley Museum. Cost of admission is half off with a donated toy to the Winterfest and Tunnel of Lights, and it should be a great evening, and submitted with sincerity.
Selectman Baker.
So on the 23rd of November, I attended the Connecticut Association of Conservation and Inland Wetlands Conference and took in a few workshops. One was on complex applications and standards for the use of experts in these, which I know you guys all wish I didn't have to miss. A workshop on 2019 Wetlands Law update, which is always my favorite, and an update on the new municipal stormwater regulations that are coming out. I also got a chance to talk to our wetlands representative at deep, Jersey Winters, about the new wetlands training sessions that should be coming out soon. We've been waiting for them for a long time, but apparently they are imminent and we need to re-up our training for that commission. Planning on zoning last week, had a public hearing for the permit renewal at 140 Wapping Road. There were some complaints brought forward from the public and a lengthy discussion on how to verify the conditions of the permit at this pit and at others in town to make sure they're being followed. They continued that, or next meeting, I mean. They also talked about their plan of conservation and development, which is, I'm sure most of you know, something we have to review every 10 years. That process has been going on in the last board of selectmen, I think we're talking about it. But anyway, the consultant was there presenting the potential zoning changes for the downtown area of Warehouse Point, which was pretty cool. And I have the electronic copies of the proposal at this point in time. If anybody wants to see them, I'll email them to anybody, really. It was an interesting plan. There was a lot of detail worked out, and the idea behind it is to get to a point where you could have basically site plan approval, where it wouldn't be special use for, you know, certain uses that are in that area, basically to try to spur some investment, you know, while also carving out, you know, the historic areas and not messing with that too much. But even for the residential properties, making it easier, since all those lots there are non-conforming for the most part, making it easier for somebody who did want to make a change to their house, upgrade their house, add a handicap rent, things like that wouldn't be as difficult with this new plan because they would be, you know, they would just change the fact that most of that stuff is non-conforming. With our current ranks. They'll be coming to us in the next couple months for general impressions. I think they were at the last board. They're not looking to reinvent the wheel when they come to us because they've already kind of done all the work, but to get some input and general impressions from us before, you know, it goes out and gets socialized more publicly. The idea in the end is that they will create and vote on and adopt new zoning regulations for Warehouse Point. So there'd be like an overlay there that would kind of hopefully get some people interested in doing some stuff. Conservation Commission is also working on the plan of conservation and development. They're looking at the feasibility of an ordinance for P-8 or 90 open. Space as opposed to, you know, the 490 for farm or forest land. So, you know, more to come on that, but that would basically allow somebody to, you know, dedicate for up to 10 years their property to open space, you know, so they're basically saying they're not going to, not going to develop it, and they would also get a tax break for that. So that's something they're working out to see if it's feasible, just stuff that they, that's typical stuff they do. They're also looking, which is probably more critical, they're looking for us to replenish the open space fund. That was depleted by the conservation of the Ry Street land last year, and they do have another prospect with similar property. You know, for those that don't know, I'm sure most of the people here know, they, in the past years, created an inventory of all the prime farmland in East Windsor and... And ranked it. And so these pieces are the prime pieces, the number ones, the number twos, that we want to make sure stay farmed, great topsoil and whatnot. They're also researching the Farm Legacy Grant Program, which is going to be re-upped for this year at the Department of Agriculture. You probably know a lot more about that than we do, but they are looking to have some, the Department of Agriculture is going to have a kickoff for that grant program, and they're hoping to try to have that here, East Windsor, apparently. They, as in the conservation. And they're now planning for the Agricultural Summit, which I attended last year. It was really good. It was held in Enfield last year, but they're also... So looking, you know, they probably will do it again. And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... On that board. What, we went over the information that I brought back from the Takuik Conference, and the one thing that came out of that as a work item that's probably pretty important is when you're doing the complex applications, you know, it's part of our job to have a soil scientist that, you know, checks to make sure the stuff that we're being told by the developers, soil scientist is not a bunch of hooey. You obviously have to pay that person. We need to make sure that we...
So the next item is public participation. This is a re-institution of a second opportunity for the public to weigh in on issues that have been before us. Sir?
I just wanted to thank all the new board members for what we've seen here tonight, the commitment to...
The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it. Wetlands last night saw one application which was approved, and a new chair and vice chair were elected. The new chair... And they're also looking to redo their Farmers Coffee Event, which they haven't done in a couple years, which was a lot of fun back when they used to do it.